Good morning, we will now call this September twenty eighth, twenty twenty two council meeting to order. We all can stand. First, we ask if you have a cellphone or device that you put it on off mute or silent. Uh, we will be led in prayer uh by Madam Clerk followed by the pledge of allegiance.
O God of might, wisdom, and justice, through whom authority is rightly administered, laws enacted and judgment decreed, assist us, we beseech thee, that this council, that this city council may be conducted in righteousness and be eminently useful to thy people over whom we reside. Amen. I pledge allegiance.
As a friendly reminder, if you're uh looking to make public comments today, uh please go to the podium, there's a sign in sheet uh where you have to sign your name and your address to make public comments uh at the end of the uh meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Counselors West?
Present.
Roots?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Present. Um approval of minutes?
So moved.
A second? Um, any questions, Madam Clerk?
Counselors West? Yes. Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes. At this moment, we will ask uh any members from the public if you have a public comment on action or agenda items only uh that you go to the podium and state your name and voice your comment or concern on agenda items only. Is no pin up there? Will you be making comments on agenda items? Or will you wait till the public comment uh section at the end of the meeting or towards the end of the meeting?
Well, um so many will be towards the end of the meeting because I'm not sure what the agenda is. My mother was told she could come to this meeting today.
Okay, there are agendas at the podium as well, so. So, that hearing seen on uh Madam Clerk?
Resolution. Whereas, the following individuals have requested a handicap parking zone. Number one, Roger Bailey, three thirty six West Twenty First Street, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen. And number two, Jane Bugara, twenty four sixteen West Fourth Street, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen. Whereas, after a thorough investigation by the Department of Public Works, it has been determined, the aforementioned individuals have met all of the required criteria and have a need for said handicap parking zone. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to install a handicap parking zone in the three hundred block of West Twenty First Street and in the twenty four hundred block of West Fourth Street in the city of Chester.
So moved.
Second. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the execution of R two two zero six zero zero one three by Michael Hurst, Department of Accounts and Finance, as a requirement of PNDOT's reimbursement agreement system for construction of the Lloyd Street Bridge project.
So moved.
Second. Is there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize entering, entering into an agreement with General Recreation Inc., P.O. Box four forty, Newtown Square, PA, one nine oh seven three for the purchase of playground equipment in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand two hundred dollars to be paid from American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds. Further, the city has complied with all purchase requirements of the Commonwealth. Further, that the solicitor's office shall review and approve the contract and the contractor shall furnish a performance bond in the full amount of their respective contract to the satisfaction of city council.
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city official to prepare a request for proposal, RFP, for management services for the city's parking system and to otherwise modernize various aspects of the city's parking system with a vision for economic development in accordance with the specifications contained in this RFP. Further, that it does authorize the city clerk to advertise for the aforementioned RFP.
Do we have a motion?
No.
Um, with no motion put forth, I'm gonna ask that uh the members of council look to table this uh resolution for further discussion uh with mayor and council, uh with Chief Lightner um and the entire team and the receivers team as well, so. We don't think there are some unanswered questions and concerns that we may have to move forward uh with this resolution. So at this point, I'm gonna ask for a motion to table a resolution number one six two dash two zero two two.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Resolution. Whereas, the city of Chester is interested in developing a Chester Creek Trail East Coast Greenway Connection Plan. And whereas, the city of Chester desires to receive from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection a coastal zone management grant for the purpose of developing this plan. And whereas, the city for Chester is seeking an amount not to exceed seventy five thousand dollars in coastal zone management funding for the completion of the plan. And whereas, the Chester Economic Development Authority will be applying for matching funds through the regional trail fund from the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize Thaddeus Kirkland, Mayor of the City of Chester and or his designee to execute all documents and agreements between the City of Chester and the Department of Environmental Protection for the coastal zone management program to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant.
So moved.
Second. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that in accordance with section five oh three point oh six C.D. of the codified ordinance ordinances of the City of Chester, the Mayor of the City of Chester does hereby authorize the proper city officials to erect stop signs at the following intersection in the city of Chester. Number one, Fourth and Ward Streets, with signs being posted on Fourth Street along both Ward Street approaches. Further, that it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to install the appropriate signage to notify the public of said stop signs.
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions?
I don't have a question, um Deputy Mayor, but I just wanna comment, um at the last meeting that we had, um there was a grandmother who was here who said that her grandchild had been hit at the intersection of Fourth and Ward. Um, so this is an effort to try to do slow down the traffic, uh traffic coming device by having a four way stop at the intersection of Fourth and Ward.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Are there any other questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does approve and order payment of a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of Accounts and Finance and is shown on expenditure approval list for the period of September tenth, twenty twenty two through September twenty fourth, twenty twenty two, attached here to and made a part here of, subject to approval from the Department of Accounts and Finance.
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
At this time, we'll move to our presentations and first we have on the agenda is uh the COVID nineteen um presentation by the Health Department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Pennsylvania Department of Health reports that there have been seven thousand seven hundred and thirty nine positive COVID nineteen cases reported in Chester since the start of the pandemic. There have been one hundred and twenty six positive COVID nineteen cases reported in Chester in September so far. The CDC has also reported seven hundred and forty eight positive case cases of monkeypox in the state of Pennsylvania. Delaware County is currently experiencing a medium level of COVID nineteen transmissions. According to the CDC, people may choose to mask at any time. Those at high risk for severe illness, those with symptoms, a positive test or exposure to someone with COVID nineteen should wear a mask. The Delaware County Health Department encourages the public to follow the CDC's recommendations for universal masking indoors regardless of vaccination status. COVID nineteen vaccinations and boosters are available on October twenty fourth and November seventh from eleven A.M. to five P.M. at the Delaware County Health Center located at one five one West Fifth Street. Walk-ins are offered, but you are encouraged to schedule an appointment by calling four eight four two seven six two one zero zero. We will be having a billboard going up in October for cancer awareness, which is sponsored by Roe Fabricators. On October thirteenth, we will have a Health Partners Luncheon and Vaccine and Booster Clinic from eleven to two in the Chester City Hall Community Room. On October twentieth, we will have a breast cancer awareness luncheon from eleven to two thirty at the Keystone First Wellness Center. And we have five flyers for all of those events on the podium. Finally, if anyone needs a COVID nineteen test kit, there are some available on the table downstairs in the lobby. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Uh, next Madam Clerk is our citation, a presentation for Dr. Carl Pierce.
Okay, Dr. Carl L. Pierce Junior. Whereas, Dr. Pierce is an internist primary care physician who practiced medicine in the city of Chester. Whereas, Dr. Pierce is the oldest of five children born to Carol and Rosebelle Pierce. Whereas, he was born and reared in Chester, PA, and graduated from Chester High School in June nineteen seventy four. Whereas, after high school, he attended Cheney State University, where he received a bachelor's degree in biology in May of nineteen seventy seven. He pursued his lifelong dream of becoming a physician and graduated from medical school in May of nineteen eighty two. Whereas, Dr. Pierce completed an internship in internal medicine at Crozier Chester Medical Center in nineteen eighty three and a residency in internal medicine at Presbyterian University of Pennsylvania Medical Center, now known as Penn Presbyterian Medical Center in nineteen eighty five. Whereas, after completion of his three year commitment, Dr. Pierce returned to Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania, where he opened his private practice in his hometown of Chester, PA in nineteen eighty eight. He was also a member of the Delaware County Medical Society and the Pennsylvania Medical Society. He also served on the Chester City Health Board for forty four years. Whereas, Dr. Pierce retired after thirty three years of serving the city of Chester and was known for serving and giving back to the community. He was the city staff physician for COVID nineteen during a very stressful time in the city. Whereas, Dr. Pierce and his wife Barbara had four children along with seven grandchildren. He enjoyed spending time with his family as well as spending time on the golf course. Now therefore, I, Mayor Thaddeus Kirkland, and the council members of the City of Chester do hereby honor Dr. Carl L. Pierce for his commitment and service to the residents of Chester, PA, presented this twenty eighth day of September twenty twenty two.
Dr. Pierce, you gotta come up. So first off, Dr. Pierce, um thanks for all the, all that you do and all that you have done over the many, many years uh serving the um City of Chester residents and so many more, of course. Uh, so myself, on behalf of Mayor Thaddeus Kirkland and council, I thank you for your years of service uh to the, to the community, uh most certainly. So if Mayor was here, he would ask you to probably sing the Cheney alumni song. I'm not gonna ask you to do that. Um, I don't know if Mayor, if uh other members of council want to uh mention anything, but again, we all thank you for sure.
Um, I'd like to have you introduce your family.
Is it all right to speak? I'd just like to, you on second.
I'll say just one, one quick thing. Thank you so much for your years of service here in the city of Chester. As a doctor, can you clone yourself because we need two or three more of you in the city right now? Well, I was trying to be conservative. But that really is a challenge in a community like Chester to have our primary care family physicians and we just, we know you have to go and we love you for their service, but we've got to get young people interested in coming back to our neighborhoods and, and serving us. So just, just thank you for what you do. You're a great example for those following in your footsteps.
Thank you, Dr. Pierce. But once I give my comments, I would like maybe Mayor and council, Deputy Mayor and council to come down to get picture with. I don't know whether anyone is here from the health board. I see Ms. Smith is here. It's quite a few, but I know they had other commitments. But I'd just like to say, many of you, I may not know, but during the pandemic, uh for that period of time, which was a very, very, very stressful time, as you heard, uh for the city of Chester. And at times, it was very difficult to get the vaccine for uh Chester resident. But anyway, I, I'd just like to say that before you were able to get your vaccine, you have to have a doctor that has to do the prescription. And United Healthcare came into the city and they were gonna do, they did uh vaccines for a whole month. But we did not have a prescribing doctor. So one morning, you know, I was really worried about it. I was out on my daily walk and it had been about seven o'clock in the morning and I called Dr. Pierce. I said, "Dr. Pierce, do you mind being that doctor um to write your prescription?" He said, "No, no problem." So some of, the reason why you got your vaccine is because of Dr. Pierce. I just, I just liked, I thought that was very important because what happens is that it has to be prescribed like by doctor, as I stated. And once the results come back, it doesn't come back to anyone. It has to come back to a doctor's office. So he was so kind and gracious to allow them to send the results back. So I just thought that was commendable because we had one doctor, he was gonna do it, but he was gonna charge twenty five thousand dollars. But Dr. Pierce never said anything to me about any cost, so. I really appreciate that. On behalf of the health board, they really appreciate that as well. Okay, I just wanted to say that. Oh, yeah, right.
As well, as well.
I, I just wanna thank you very much. Thank, thank the council, uh thank Ms. Carter and tell Mayor Kirkland, thank you. Tell him that I'm, I still think I'm a better basketball player than him. But anyway, uh I just wanna, I, it's been a privilege and an honor. And uh, and I leave, but you know, with a little bit of mixed feelings about that because I'm gonna basically miss a lot of people. Lot of patients that I, you know, you get old, you start getting emotional, boy. But a lot of people that, 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 that I've met and been able to, to help and that have actually, uh that have, you know, meant something to me over the years, so. I, you know, a lot of you probably have family members, if not yourselves, and I just want you to know that I, I really appreciated your trust in allowing me to take care of you.
And I want you to know Dr. Pierce can sing. He comes from a family of singers, I know.
So, at this moment, uh we're gonna do a little shakeup in the agenda. Um, instead of members of council opening the floor to public comment, uh members of council are gonna give our uh public comments and our announcements, uh so you are able to hear those. While we're doing that, um and you're listening, please, if you intend to make a public comment, please go to the podium and sign your name and address. Um, and once members of council are finished, then we will open up the floor for public comment. Thank you. Councilman Roots?
I think we'll call this the freestyle section. So I think it makes a lot of sense to uh, to do this this way because it gives us an opportunity to, at the least, give announcements that are usually left at the very end. And oftentimes, people have, have left or have tuned out, so we wanna get this right up top. I want to follow up on Mrs. King's COVID uh update. On October thirteenth, she mentioned that the Health Partners Luncheon and Booster Clinic is going to be here at Chester City Hall. I don't wanna miss the part of Booster Clinic. There actually is going to be vaccines and boosters giving out that day. When I hear luncheon, that's where I just tune out because I'm all about the food. But there will be boosters and I see a third flyer here that also mentions bingo. So there's gonna be some fun as well, so. Come on downstairs to our community room and our computer room where the boosters are gonna be given out. Get yourself a light lunch and play bingo. My big announcement, and I'm just gonna limit it to one today, is the long awaited Kaboom Playground Build that's going on right now in Sun Village Park. It's a three day build. It started yesterday. We did such a great job yesterday that we've been asked to not come out today. So we're gonna pick it up tomorrow. There'll be over a hundred people out there. If you're available, come out, we'll give you something to do. Um, I can't thank enough our Public Works Crew, our Recreation Crew. Dwayne, in my absence, was leading the charge yesterday. Everything was just smooth and coordinated and, and we even finished early to the point that, you know, we, we got it all done and we didn't have to be there tomorrow. It's, it's such a huge spirit of cooperation. Our, the police, Police Department. Oh, there he is. Commissioner and I have been pulling our hair out at the degree of security they're expecting to see down at Sun Village Park. We're accommodating them, but we're also, uh, I don't know, I don't know what the right word is, but the the reputation of Chester is a little more than extreme. But we're giving them the security that they're required. Our fire department's also involved for, with first aid. So just about every department in the city is involved. But tomorrow's gonna be a really big day. The ribbon cutting, if you can't make it to help us build, is around two thirty is what's expected. So anywhere between two and two thirty. Come on down, see the ribbon cutting, see a brand new place at, at Sun Village Park. It's exciting. I wanna thank everybody inside and out who, who helped us with this.
Councilwoman?
Um, I just like to again remind the community to recycle. We're still having concerns with people not recycling properly. You're to use the blue recycling cans. And I know that some of you have concerns because, um, you say that the trash vendor is co-mingling the, um, the recycling. And I know sometimes that happens when uh people, you know, our community members are co-mingling, you know, the trash. And then in some cases, when, um, let's say a household or households are missed and then the trash vendor comes back as a result of a complaint, then sometimes they'll throw it in with the regular trash and we're working with the trash vendor on that. But, um, we're able to, when we report, do our big report at the end of the year, um, we're able to get funding or reimbursement from the amount of tonnage that we turn in as it pertains to recycling. So I'm asking for your help, your support on that so that we can, um, recycle properly. We all know what it means to the environment to recycle. And uh I'm also asking residents to be mindful as to how you're putting your trash out. I know a lot of people use trash bags and they're not using the trash cans with lids on them. And sometimes the animals get into it and what have you and it's all over the place. And sometimes when the trash vendor is picking up the trash and they go to lift up a bag, then it, it bursts open. So I'm asking you to be mindful. Um, you're to put your trash out. You can put your trash out at four P.M. the day before your collection. So if you're, like, my, my day is Friday, I, by four P.M., four P.M. today, I can put it out. But I choose to put it out in the morning before they get there. But uh please be mindful as to how we're putting the trash out because we do want to, um, clean up our city. And we're working diligently as we get the reports and as we ride around. And most of you see me, I'm out there every day in the alleys and riding around looking at the dumping situation. So as we get those reports, we, um, my staff, our staff, we, they go out and uh, and clean up those alleys and what have you. But if you see any And clean up those alleys and what have you. But if you see any incidents, if you see anyone dumping. We don't want you to approach anyone, but if you can get. Make a model color of the vehicle or license plate or something like that, it would be very helpful. Then we can turn it over to our commissioner, who's also been very supportive with those incidents.
Working with our camera system, I gotta give Mike Galante his props. Um, we have a few videos. And one thing I'm big about is using social media to our advantage. We're gonna post videos. Of the trucks, of the individuals, uh, the tags. Another thing, if you're in a neighborhood and you see. A box truck, U-Haul, that's one big thing they're using for illegal dumping, but I could tell you this now, I'm gonna air you out. And you will be on social media. Thank you.
The commissioner just talked about the cameras and, you know.
Okay.
And thank you, Michael Galanti, for all of your support in this as well. So that's my comments for right now.
Thank you, councilman. Thank you. Um, just a few quick things and we'll open up to the public. Uh, American Rescue Plan, uh, discussion, we're gonna look to have that on October eleventh. It's gonna be right here in the, uh, in, in the council room. Um, I believe we're gonna start it at four-thirty, uh, I think the four-thirty or five o'clock. I'll make sure that you all are aware of that. But it's gonna be our follow-up discussion, uh, surrounding it, the funds of the American Rescue Plan. Um, and a part of that or the objective, parts of the obje- objective of that meeting is to answer. All of the questions, comments, concerns that you all, uh, provided to us back in July when we had the meeting. So. Uh, just be on the lookout for more information coming, uh, for that on October eleventh. Job postings, we have a few vacant positions in some, uh, various departments here. Uh, two that I'll mention is a Chief Financial Officer in the Finance Department, uh, that is posted. Uh, on, we have posted on our website, uh, which will direct you to a, a hiring agency, I believe, called, uh, Affion, Affion. Uh, so please, if you know anyone that is qualified or and are looking for. An opportunity to join the City of Chester team and to right the ship, uh, please, uh, apply for that position. Also, we're looking for a Director of Human Resources, uh, which is a, a big position here in the City of Chester. So if you know anyone that. Uh, maybe qualified or if you are qualified, please, please, please apply. And there are a few other positions there on our website. Go to. Uh, W W W dot Chester City dot com. There is a tab for jobs. And there you'll see some of the job postings that we currently have. So. Um, I won't mention much on this, but there's always, there's progress being made on our, uh, waterfront and Route two ninety-one. Um, I don't know if Mike Galante wants to mention anything, but, uh, there are a few small projects, uh, that we've been. That we've accomplished over the last two to three years, uh, with some road repa- road repavements. Uh, we currently have another one going on right now, um, as well as beautifying, uh, the area near the boat launch and the boat dock area. So. Uh, if you have not ro- uh, driven, uh, in the area as of recently, uh, please take a drive down there. You might see some construction work still going on. Um, but, uh, please, there's progress being made as we look to beautify and offer, uh, more of an inviting. Appealing area for our waterfront for all of the residents to, uh, uh, attend to. So. Uh, and also there will be a bigger, a big announcement, uh, in October, uh, with the Philadelphia Union of. And what we're looking to do in partnership with the, the Philadelphia Union as well. Uh, last thing I will mention before I allow. Uh, Mr. Dwayne Lee to make a, a quick comment on something I would said, um, is a food truck festival. As you know, we've did, did a few food truck festivals in the, in the summer months. They were very successful. Uh, all of the, the vendors and, uh, the community appreciated everything that came out of that. So we decided to extend that. Um, the food truck festival. So I believe it's, uh, one is upcoming this Friday, uh, starts at five-thirty and ends at ten, I believe. Um, so please, 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 um, if you have nothing to do, or even if you do have something to do, just stop on down here. Uh, prior to those engagements, uh, from five-thirty to ten P M. On, uh, this Friday, uh, the food truck festival. Mr. Lee?
Good morning, Dwayne Lee from Recreation Department. I just wanted to make an announcement for the Chester Education Foundation. Um, I seen Ms. Green yesterday and she pleaded to me to, she has about twenty to thirty positions. Available for the youth from eighteen to twenty-six. So, um, for you guys who are watching on T V and for you that are here. Um, please send them over to Ms. Green from the Chester Education Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Where's she located, Ms.? Where's she located? Just so people will know.
I'll take it from there. Chester Education Foundations is located in the, what do we call that? The Fidelity Building, the.
Is that the building up here?
Yeah, the, the tall white building. On the corner of Fifth and Avenue of the States. They're on the seventh floor. The positions for the eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds will provide them with some soft skill training for about a week or two. And then she literally places you in employment. And the pay is really good. Many, many of the jobs are benefit-related. And they are not flipping burgers unless that's what you wanna do. So there's some employers that are awaiting every year. Uh, this, the, I can't call them students because they're generally high school graduates, but the young people that come through that program. And unfortunately, 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 almost every year, she never. Fills the quota of students that, I keep saying students, of young people that can go through that program. So I'm glad she reached out to Mr. Lee and it's a strong plea to the community. Eighteen to twenty-four, twenty-six-year-olds, as he said, just show up. Chester Education Foundation, the seventh floor, the Fidelity Building, the big tall building right on the corner of Fifth and Avenue of the States. Just get off at the seventh floor and you're stepping right on to the Chester Education Foundation Office. And it's Elaine Upton Green. That's the person you wanna contact. Uh, Blueprint for Success is the name of the program.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, at this time, we'll open the microphone for public comment and, uh, with the sign-in sheet that we have here, I have Ms. Brown. Uh, please be mindful of the, the three-minute limit that we have here, uh, for public comments. Thank you.
Good morning, Tev.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, I just have a couple of things to do, uh, say. I, first of all, I'd like to thank you for, I haven't been here for a few of your meetings. But the, uh, things I discussed that to look into, that you did look into. The trucks parking on the two ninety-one at Ingalls Street, uh, I thank you because now you can ride and you have a turning lane, actually. Um, also, the dumping that was going on down in our section, that has stopped. But, um, I still want you to look into the dumpsters. At Wilson Street in Hayes Street in that closed yard, okay? Um, also, um. I, uh, understand the grandmother, because I'm a grandmother too. Uh, the child being hit and wanting to stop sign at Fourth and Ward Street. But we have, I have put in before and questioned. From Second and two ninety-one, well, the two ninety-one, we say Second Street and Holland Avenue. Straight on down to Flower Street. They're the only lights. It's a speed lane down there. And there have been. A couple of people killed down there and accidents constantly coming out of Ward Street. And Wilson Street because the way, we know the way the street's made and you have trucks parked along the sidewalk and trees. You can't see coming out of there. So as you're considering putting a stop sign. At Fourth and Ward, which is less travel, then that two ninety-one, which is nothing but a speed trap down there. You need to consider putting a stop sign either at Wilson Street, Ward Street. And Ingalls Street if possible, because like I said, it's very dangerous down in that area. And if you don't do, uh, stop signs, consider speed bumps along there to make them slow down. Okay, um, that's all. Thank you.
Um, I believe down on two ninety-one. Um, at Wilson and Ward, maybe not every street, but we're looking at a light there at two ninety-one. And Ingalls Street. Uh, two ninety-one and Jeffrey.
Okay, I can, I can understand Jeffrey because you're coming off that bridge. But still, to get to Jeffrey Street, you're flying from Holland Avenue to there, okay? So it, 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 yeah, really needs to be considered.
Um, oh, Councilman Roots just shared with me, there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars earmarked for. A study of Route two ninety-one's corridor. So, you know. We are looking into that and, and monies are being provided for that. So, you know. And that Fourth and Ward Street was a quick fix, you know, but not all things. Can be done really quickly, but we are looking at it, just so you'll know.
Right. I'd said that was all, but there is one thing. At the two ninety-one and Ward Street again, I know that's a busy street.
That's your street.
Yes. Um, I complained about the dirt piles that were piled up. They removed the dirt piles. But now they're piling stone, crushed stone in the yard.
You know who is, a business is doing that or you?
I understand. It's the same trucking company that J W something.
Did you get the name of the truck?
Uh, I have it on my phone, but, you know.
Then you send it to me, you have my number.
Right. They're dumping stone there and I understand the stone is to be crushed. And i- it's not a problem, but if they would put something around that fence. Because the dust in that area and the dirt is tremendous.
Well, um, maybe that's something you can see Mr. Gary Collins about, you know, about the dumping of that and that particular company.
Right.
Uh, I know you don't have Mr. Collins' number, but you have mine. Send it to me and I'll, I'll give it to Mr. Collins.
Right, because I did go to the Environmental Protection on it and they sent me a letter that they did. Give them a letter. It took them a while to find out who owned that lot even, but.
Right.
This trucking company is only renting the space to dump this stuff. But I had no idea who's being, who they're renting.
Who's monitoring it and, and the environmental hazard that it causes when they do it. I understand what you're saying. And Mr. Collins is the one who can enforce whatever on that piece. I can, you know, we can remove, my department, we can remove certain dumping sites. But something like that, Mr. Collins, and you know, and Ellen I.
Thank you. Um, next we have. Christine Moss. While she's coming, I'll add to that, uh, two ninety-one. It, it should be understood that two ninety-one isn't the city street. It's a, it's a state highway.
Yeah.
So that's important to know. But to the streets that feed into two ninety-one, they are city streets. And as we talk about some of the calming measures, I think that's the term I learned, as we talk about that. And some of the issues making particularly a left turn on two ninety-one out of the streets that may be blocked by traffic. That's parked to, close to the corner or the trees. We know that that's, that's difficult because we have cars and we try to turn on those roads too. So we'll be engaging the public as we come up with a, with a study how to best. Get onto two ninety-one from our city streets. Um, some of the suggestions have been to. Prohibit going down two ninety-one, going down our city streets to two ninety-one. To make them one-way just off of two ninety-one to Third Street. And in some cases, it may be no left turns, you know, from the city side, not the riverside, but from the city side. So, I mean, it's not like we're not thinking about these things or talking about these things, but it's, uh. There's a lot to it and there's a lot of people involved that's gonna help make the final decision, including those of you who live in those areas. So.
And also with the trees that, um, sometimes block, you know, the vision. Of persons trying to make turns onto two ninety-one, we, um, the Streets Department. And along with our, uh, with Lisa Gaffney's area, we're Shade Tree Commission. We're looking at, um, tree trimming too, so that the, um. The blocking of, of your view when you're trying to turn onto two ninety-one is not, uh, prohibited. So we're looking at that too.
Thank you. Smalls?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, I'm here in reference to my, where I live on Ninth Street, between. Uh, what is it? Lamoken and Pennell, uh, right across from Chester Apartments, but it's the empty houses. It's three of them right where I'm at. And if you need addresses, I give them to you. I called over here a number of times. And there's, um, bed mattresses on the porches and. Big black trashy bags. Uh, it's like a dump. And then right next door to me. The person that owns the house, she puts a note on the door. This is now the dumping ground with her name, address and phone number. Now, who does that? And if your property, you have to move it. And if you're living in Delaware, why do I have to live like this down here? So, um, my whole thing is with that area. It's too much trash right out front on Ninth Street. Three empty houses in a row right where I live at. And around back. Every year, the grass grows up, trees all across the, um, front, you know, the back. Ha- how it grows across. Now, they've grown across those three empty houses. I'm watching it because I do not want it to touch mine because it needs to come down. And I'm just in reference about the owners, they're holding on to them houses. Thinking they're gonna get something because Chester's trying to do something and. But they're not taking care of what they have. And they're paying the taxes because you never put a note on the door. And they've been empty for like fifteen, twenty years. So they're paying the taxes. Nothing's being put on the door, but they're holding on to them. And. I know she live in Delaware, but the other ones, I don't know where they live at, but I know they not living like what. I'm living in Chester because there is right where I'm living at.
You know, uh. Right. Ms. Mr. Gary Collins is the, um, head of L and I Licensing and Inspections in the Department of Public Safety. Those concerns will go to him.
But, but also about the bulk trash?
It's up on the porch.
Oh, it's on the porch?
The bulk trash is up on the porch. It's on the porch. That's another one I issue.
Okay. I'll speak with Gary as well, I guess, on the property on the side, let's see what we can do. Um, next on the sign-in sheet, uh, I apologize, but unfortunately I cannot read the handwriting.
Oh, wow, that's one of those fancy handprints.
It looks like it starts with an S. Mrs. Saleem, did you sign it?
Okay.
Sorry, Mrs. Saleem, you gave me your doctor's signature. I couldn't read that.
One of those, uh, movie star signatures.
Good morning. Yes, my name is Alim Abdul Saleem. I live two forty past Street in Chester. We say Alhamdulillah, praise be to our Lord. Alhamdulillah. So Insha Allah, I'd like to make God roll and I'd like to make brief comments. How are you, councilman?
Fine, yourself?
Yes, ma'am, good, good. Yes, it's, it's good seeing you. Uh, you know, the mayor is not here today, but, okay, let me. Okay, let me just get right to my, you know, you know, let me just say to us that this is the first step uh to greatness. Now, some of us may think we got some great plans and so on and so on of this world and all this and that, this world, we see this world going out. And we see a new order is coming in. So there's much to be said yet, there's much that's gonna be said uh of this new order. You haven't started talking the language of this new order yet, I'd like to say that. If I may, Jesus says, you shall do greater things than I. So certainly we're going to continue moving, we're going to arrive there, we're going to get there. We're going to get there. I just uh, I, 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 maybe that's covering my whole uh subject, ain't nobody my whole point that I wanted to do, right, you know? But uh we have to know that what is happening here. And we cannot uh look back expecting to bring what is back there forward. We hear the expression, uh it cannot go, Allah is, will not go. So with that, I uh, yes, uh, it's the children, let's get down to the children, that's it. From me to that, Inshallah. Uh we heard the expression in the south, we heard this question of, yeah, the children would be doctors, lawyers and Indian chief, right? So there's a lot of wisdom in that, there's a lot of wisdom in that, a lot of wisdom, doctors. With this language, willingness, our children would be willing, willing, willing to succeed, willing, willing to succeed. It's in their God, in their soul, the willingness to succeed, to carry the world on. You know, so, yeah, doctors, lawyers, Indian chief, they can be, even be Indian chief, they'd be humble. Not too big to be Indian, they'd be humble. Humble and great. I thank you very much, I thank you very much, yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Celine. Mrs. Celine, you're right though, I uh, whenever I go to speak to the youth, um I always tell them that they have to be willing to learn and they always have to be a sponge. To soak up all the knowledge and education that they can get, no matter what room that they're in, so you're right. And those are great, great careers that you mentioned. Um also, so, so next on the uh, for the podium is Mr. Kapoor, uh prior to Mr. Kapoor, and you can come up. I just wanted to make really fast, Ms. Moss made a comment about uh landlords or 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 homeowner, well, I won't say homeowner. Homeowners or owners of properties that have these properties that are vacant uh for many years and they go and live wherever they choose to, really don't uh provide any accountability or responsibility to the homes in the city of Chester. Uh we are looking to see what type of uh ordinances that we can put into place. Uh many of, hopefully some that we can tax a different code uh to these uh dilapidated, blighted communities or properties that have sit, sat dormant for uh multiple amounts of years. Uh we've been coordinating and talking with the receivers team, uh and some of the consultants that they've been able to bring in to speak to that, to see how we can enforce something similar, so. Uh nothing has been ironed out yet, but that is a problem that we have and one that we're looking to see if there is a way uh that we can address in the coming uh future, hopefully this year and or down the line the next few years, so. With that, I'm quiet and uh, Mr. Kapoor.
Uh uh thank you, uh Deputy Mayor, uh my name is VJ Kapoor, I serve as the uh Chief of Staff for the Receiver for the City of Chester. Uh I'm coming here uh this morning to, to give a little more context as to the parking issue and, and also to address the unfortunate inaction uh by council this morning uh on uh moving forward with simply advertising a notice for a parking management system, RFP. Uh for those of you who don't know, last week, the Commonwealth Court found that the existing contract between the city's parking manager, PFS, and the city was void. Uh it was void because the city failed to comply with the advertising and competitive bidding requirements of the third class city code. When a contract is void, it means it basically never existed in the first place. And it means that PFS cannot continue to enforce parking in the city. Uh this is something that the receiver has been dealing with for, for a couple of years now. Uh we have felt that this was a terrible contract uh for the city just to begin with. Uh and as I said, last Monday, uh the court uh acknowledged that the receiver could terminate the contract and indeed found that the contract was void. As a result of that, that raises the question to many people as to what happens next, what do we do with parking next? And we've gotten a lot of calls and I believe council members have as well, particularly from those individuals who uh live in neighborhoods where there is a residential permit parking program. Once the receiver understood that the um contract was void, uh we had been working on, on an RFP process and brought it to uh brought the notice to council last week, requesting that it be put on uh this council agenda uh to authorize uh an RFP so that we can move forward, because again, the existing parking manager cannot enforce anymore. Uh and what we were really looking for in that RFP was someone to enforce the current parking regu- regulations, including the residential permit parking program. Two is to develop a comprehensive plan, which should have been done the first time, and three, which is implement and manage a parking program for the city. Uh and so we're trying to move as quickly as we can and what we were looking today to do was at the receiver's direction to have council issue uh that RFP. Uh unfortunately, that didn't happen today, uh this was tabled. And as a result of that, um we're in a situation right now where this is gonna be delayed as to what happens next. It's not gonna be delayed as to the enforcement, the manager has to go. But the reason why the receiver is actually here, and I'm even stepping in here right now, and why we have to step in this situation, is because there isn't a plan that council has. You all don't have a plan for what the next steps are. And what we're trying to do is to move forward with this RFP to get the process going so that we can address the very significant parking issues that we have in the city. And what was simply asked here was to place a notice for an RFP so that we can work with it and get it out and be able to address the situation. And that didn't happen, and you all have been fighting us for the last two and a half years on this parking contract. It is not helpful to the public, it is not helpful to the residents, the court found that you didn't follow the procurement process the first time. And so in our view, we are trying to address this situation the right way. In a way that benefits the city and a way that is in the best interest of the residents of the city. And it is extremely disappointing today to see that you all would table this motion. We would have been happy to speak with you all over the past couple of days, in fact, we spoke with the COO, I spoke with the solicitor as to the issues. And nothing happened here. And it, as, as I said, it's, it's incredibly disappointing for us and for those of you who are gonna be calling us in the receiver's office, particularly from the residential parking program with questions about why is this taking so long or what may be, may or not happen, I will refer you to the inaction that was taken this morning by council. Thank you.
I'd like to make a statement to, to that effect. I made a motion, but I didn't realize what I was making a motion to. I understand that I made a motion to table this and that was not my intent. I was making a motion because there wasn't a motion made to approve as it was presented to, to us. No, there was a second and we voted unanimously, but I, I will say, I uh did not intend to make a motion to table, I was making a motion for the original resolution uh as it was listed here. How do we proceed there?
I, I think we should meet an executive session. We should adjourn temporarily and meet an executive session with council's permission.
So at um, at this moment, uh members of council, uh solicitor will go into a temporary um executive session and we'll be back momentarily.
We can resume.
We're gonna resume the council meeting, uh council is now uh returned from executive session.
Um good afternoon, everyone. Uh council convened in executives, in executive session to discuss Roberts Rules of Order and parliamentary procedure as to a motion that was made concerning the parking bid. In an abundance of caution and to be fair to certain council folks who may not have understood what motion was made, council would like to redo the motion. And we would ask Madam Clerk though to, if possible, to reread the motion as made.
Okay. Resolution. The council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to prepare a request for proposal, RFP, for management services for the city's parking system and to otherwise modernize various aspects of the city's parking system with a vision for economic development in accordance with the specifications contained in this RFP. Further, that it does authorize the city clerk to advertise for the aforementioned RFP.
So move.
Do we have a second? Uh with no second, this uh resolution cannot carry forward. Um I am gonna make the recommendation that members of council look to table uh this resolution for a further discussion uh with all parties involved. Uh with that, do I have a, a motion to table this resolution?
So move.
My second, Madam Clerk.
Counselors West? Yes. Ruth?
No.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes. Alright, thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, council.
You're welcome.
Solicitor. Um with that, I do wanna get back to public comments, we still have some individuals that need to make public comments. Uh prior to doing that, I do wanna make a brief comment about this uh resolution and the comments that were made. Um members of council believes that we have a parking issue here in the city of Chester, whether it's in a business district or whether it's in a residential areas, there is a parking issue. There are houses that have two, three, four, five vehicles, no matter if it's in cro- the section near closure of a hospital, uh no matter if it's in the Sun Hill area. Uh no matter if it's in a downtown business district area, there is a parking uh issue here in the city of Chester and we're looking to find uh strategic ways to hopefully be able to resolve that. Uh so what uh mayor and council would like to do uh was to sit down with, we will sit down with uh all the members of council, with the receivers team, uh our COO to discuss what are the best uh options moving forward. We're gonna do this with, in collaboration and partnership with everyone involved. Um so I think there are, there are a few unanswered uh questions and concerns that we just wanna make sure that we are uh clear on. Uh so we know that how we can uh best proceed forward and mess, make the best uh decisions and selections uh for our constituents and for the business community here in the city of Chester, so. I thank uh members of council for uh what has happened today and, and I look forward to continuing discussions with the receiver and their team on uh what we can do in the coming uh weeks and or the coming meetings so that we can look to have some form of enforcement, uh parking enforcement here in the city of Chester. Thank you, is there any other comments? No? With that, um I wanna make sure that we get to the last and final comment I have here, but I don't think Ms. Olivia Smith is here?
No, she left.
She left? Okay. So with that, I don't have any other public comments in front of me, I don't know if members of council have any uh lasting comments that they may wanna make. With that, this meeting, um count, sorry, this council meeting is now adjourned. Oh, sorry. I did not beat the gavel yet, y'all.
One announcement, uh Councilman. Uh it's a little, uh just a heads up, um it's Amanda is gonna put it out on the website, just to bring everybody up to speed, October seventh. From seven to nine PM, we will be having an open house for Fire Prevention Month at Fire Station eighty one, Third and Silman Streets. Uh we have vendors, there's gonna be food, there's gonna be a moon bounce for the kids. First time we've kinda really done this uh in this kinda setting and, and, and first time we ever done it in a third street, so. Uh it should be a good community event and uh I hope everybody can come out and join us, uh but that's gonna be up on the website.
Commissioner, what's the date?
October seventh, seven to nine.
Okay. Um and thank you, you stopped me in my tracks, be, oh go ahead, go ahead, Councilman. You stopped me in my tracks because I, I, I'll be remiss if I did not mention this, uh the city of Chester is doing a, a Vision twenty thirty five comprehensive plan. Uh so you may see something like this on our website or downstairs, there's a QR code that you can scan your phone or put your camera up to the QR code and it'll take you directly to a survey. Uh this is the Chester, uh city of Chester, uh Vision twenty thirty five, uh vision plan where you will be able to take a survey uh and, and, and put your ideas, your thoughts on what needs to be in this survey, or sorry, that what needs to be in this uh twenty thirty five uh vision plan for the city of Chester.
I just have a question for Commissioner Rigby, we didn't get any type of updates uh regarding Hurricane Ian, any remnants or anything that?
Uh not at this time, but I will keep everybody up to speed if uh we get this storm tracking in our direction and we'll get everything out and we'll keep Amanda in the loop. But right now, we'll just uh pray for our folks, our friends and family.
Right, right. Just so you know that Commissioner Rigby is the city's um emergency manager and I think someone asked a question last week about our emergency management and he is the emergency management person here for the city of Chester in cases of disasters, you know, flooding, you know, anything from a climate perspective, he is in charge. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Alright, now I think we're good to go. Um at this moment, this uh council meeting is now adjourned.